We're ready to begin with everybody in this place. Welcome to Ken Bay Forum for Glencoe City Council. My name is Regina Louveney, and I am the president of the League of Republican Voters for Washington and Hessen. And as you know, our local lead, the state and national lead are nonpartisan. We do not support or oppose any political party candidate. Our mission is to engage you, the voter, by giving all candidates for a given office a public space to answer questions and instruct a debate while maintaining civil discourse. Thank you to all the members that have been teamed up tonight to make this forum successful. And thank you to the audience for taking their time and effort to hear and observe the candidates tonight. Our voting services work includes forums like this, voter registration, and more. We also educate voters and advocate legislators on election reforms, be equal rights men, protect the environment, and help pay reform. We all take positions on issues after studying them extensively. We hope you'll consider joining the lead. Management forums are available on the table outside, and a QR code will take you to the website, L W B of P W M. Remember, the League of Republican Voters is not included at all. And now I'll turn to the forum holder, Judy Esther Christ, who's our moderator for the evening. Judy, it's all yours. Oh, and one other thing, we will be walking the aisles to collect questions, to distribute index cards to link the question you want to ask. Pat and Corning in the back, Pat, if you wave your hand, will be collecting questions, and I will be on this aisle, collecting questions, giving out index cards, and bringing them to our others at the table. Okay, Judy, it's all yours.
Thank you. So, thank you Regina, and we're ready to see all of you here. So, for overall center, the League of Women Voters has sought to make democracy work. I hold an investment beliefs, like this one, so that voters like you can hear and observe the behavior of candidates on a range of issues relevant to this community. That's why we ensure that all candidates have agreed to the debate procedures, which they all have. And in further, by being here tonight, you all, as an audience, have signed off those as well. They are posted on the draw as you mentioned. Now, the League has used procedures like this for over fifty years. They're not new. They are intended to ensure fair process and encourage civil discourse, and that candidates understand transparently what the process is. Now, let me read all the rules out loud, which is a little tedious, but bear with me, it will take a little less than three minutes. The moderator will be a member of the lead from outside of this room. I live outside of this room. Candidates' opening statements will be determined by drawing lots before the in-person event. The same order will be for opening and closing statements. If you are wondering how people are in this order, number one is down there, number twelve is here. Thank you, candidates, for being so good about drawing lots for twelve people. Each candidate will be allowed two minutes for opening a statement. After all candidates have spoken, the moderator will open a meeting of questions from the audience. Cards will be handed out for written questions. These will be vetted prior to being asked, so that duplicate, personal, abusive, or bias questions can be discarded. The vettors will try to have as large a range of questions as possible. Moderator will be the auditor of whether questions are appropriate, effective, or abusive. Each candidate will be given one and a half minutes to answer each question, and at the moderator's discretion, the time for a response may be reduced, as long as it is the same for everyone. Now, because there are twelve candidates, I will, as the rules allow, limit answers to some questions to a minute or thirty seconds, or even ask for a lightning round of single worded questions, single word answers. And also requested that the candidates who are in the first six unanswered questions answer as much as they want, or not, and candidates in the second six, unless somebody's targeted, somebody has asked someone in particular to respond, that they make their answers shorter. And we're going to do that because if every candidate took eight, took ninety seconds for each question, it would be eighteen minutes per question, and we might only get through to it there. So, we will see how this works with nine-second answers. There will be no rebuttal. Questions may be addressed to a specific candidate or to candidates in general, or all candidates will be given an opportunity to answer any question addressed to a specific individual. The moderator will attempt to order the responses for each question. A lead member will act as timekeeper. One and a half minutes can be ended within the given timekeeper, time period, timekeeper or emergency speaker by a clear answer. Now, really, please hold up the thirty-second sign, and the stop sign. When the time is up, the speaker will be allowed to finish the sentence, repeatedly speaking, passing that line, may result in a candidate losing time for a future question or for outstanding additional time. The nine candidates will have two minutes for closing their statement. Ten, since the purpose of the meeting is to determine candidates' views, no substitute speaker will be allowed to appear should a candidate be unable to attend in person. No written or recorded statements taken provided in lieu of active participation using props, carts, or vehicles are disallowed in the county, and that is prohibited. And we are very glad that all twelve candidates for City Council haven't got to believe until after midnight, so applaud. Applause. Glencoe's community should be proud of the candidates who do this. And according to the League policy, the lead owns the content of the forums, audio or video recording by authorized members of the media will be permitted only agreed by all candidates present, and the lead maintains the right to record the forum and publish it on lead-controlled platform sites. No other recording will be allowed, no partial transcript of reporting being published without written permission from the lead, and we do this in order to ensure that our videos are not used for partisan purposes. We are in fact recording it, and we will, this recording will go up tomorrow on the L W B of P W M YouTube channel, and we have a QR code, and we have the link to it outside. As a moderator, I will be the auditor of all the tours. The League believes the responsibility for maintaining good government rests on the leaders. So we have a few expectations here. Please be sure that your cell phones are off or silent, and please do not lock the doors or the camera. Your purpose is to hear from the candidates, so they focus on their voices, not yours. Please remain seated and silent during the debate, and make sure writers are submitted in question hours. So the vettors, as you will see around, will turn their buttons on, will be collecting questions, and handing out follow-up questions. As moderator or stock for the date of the audience that interrupts, our interruptions would use the time and have them as well. To read, the lead policy commits only authorized recordings, taking clips of statements that are unauthorized, and we will just keep them as. Any audience member who violates the procedure or disrupts the forum by ignoring these audience expectations, I will warn, maybe ask for leave. So, let's start with the opening statements. We're going to start down there and move forward.
Good evening. I want to thank everybody for coming. My name is Jack McHughes. I'm a current city councilman, and I'm serving my first term. I graduated from Glencoe High School in nineteen eighty-three, and I earned my business economics degree from Oney Outfit in nineteen eighty-eight. I had plenty to follow my father into business, but God had other plans for me, and he turned me into a policeman, and I wound up serving Glencoe as a Glencoe policeman for twenty-five years. I retired as a sergeant. So as is usually the case, God wasn't wrong. I served citizens of Glencoe, and it was the greatest, most rewarding, and fulfilling career I could have imagined. In an effort to continue my service to the community, I ran for office in twenty-twenty-one, and was chosen by you to become a city councilman. Before taking office, I made three commitments: to reclaim fishing grounds on Morgan's Island that were banned by the prior administration to the whole of fishing, to hold runway development and hold corporate jobs accountable for changes in our master plan and contributions to the city, and to put Glencoe on a path of fiscal responsibility. I delivered on all three of those commitments. As part of Team Pansyback, I assisted in the negotiation of a decrease to the capital borrow. I oversaw sound budget management practices, and assisted in the creation of a balanced twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four budget. As a result of our fiscal oversight, the New York State Controllers Office raised Glencoe's fiscal outlook improvement twice, an outlook which continues to improve. In addition, our moved bond rate improved, lowering borrowing costs for the city. You've gone through a great number of leads accomplished by Team Pansyback tonight. I hope you listen closely and come to appreciate all the hard work done by your mayor and Pansyback.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dana Altegasi Stagnolo. Thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you to the League of Republican Voters for setting up tonight's forum. My husband Tommy and I grew up in Glencoe, went to Glencoe High School, and then made the decision to back there to raise our family. We now have four children in the Glencoe School District and are lucky to be surrounded by our parents and extended family. I've been a financial journalist for more than twenty years, and I keep an office in the heart of the downtown. I'm a board member on the Downtown Business Improvement District, president of the Glencoe Education Foundation, liaison city youth bureau, and a member of many other organizations that I care deeply about. There's no question that I'm invested in this city. Four years ago, I saw the opportunity to help the city I love, and I ran for council and I won. I have listened to the residents and worked hard to implement positive training. I'm proud of the things that I have accomplished. At City Stadium, I advocated successfully for new features. I also raised private donations to plant tree trees along the fence line and money for new store boards. I raised about forty thousand dollars in private donations to help rebuild the VFW. I secured the location of Morgan's Park for the Heroes Anonymous program, and fundraised for the money we needed to get that program off the ground. I continue to work with the Long Island Railroad to implement a number of positive changes to help our train line become faster for our community. Today, through my work with the bid, I have been working to revitalize a part of Glencoe, which you'll hear more about. I do this because I'm deeply committed to a better Glencoe, but there's still more work to be done. I execute all things, and I work hard every day for the people of Glencoe, and I'm asking for the opportunity to continue to make Glencoe the best community for my family and your family. Thank you so much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joe Nick, Freddie. Originally from Brooklyn, New York, and I found my way here in Glencoe, New York. And unlike my colleagues who are so amazing when compared to their opening statement, I prefer to say that I choose not to write a script, because I wanted to speak from the heart and tell you about who I am and why I love the city of Glencoe. I think my first experience with the city of Glencoe occurred in the nineties, when I used to work on university C W Post campus. Prior to that, when I was a student, a Glencoe resident named Patty Figaro used to work in the university. And she took a showing to some colleagues of mine and some of my classmates. And at the time, you know, it's interesting, we love Jack mentioned earlier about God, and how that ties into me, is that Patty learned that I wasn't confirmed as a Catholic in the Roman Catholic Church. So she iterated to make her association with St. Patrick's. So as a result, I ended up receiving my confirmation from St. Patrick's Church. So that's, you know, like the first major impact that the city of Glencoe ever had in my life. Fast forward, some of you may know my voice or recognize my face from how you participated in what was then known as Jazzers Square in the city of Glencoe in the late nineties, when Tom Swasey was the mayor, Martin Pearson was the director, executive director of the bid. I spent twenty years there, acted on the stage every Friday night, going once in July and August with all of my students from two different institutions to try to help improve the Business Improvement District by trying to get more economy there. Currently, I work for the State University of New York, a student college of West Virginia University, Opus Verena University, and teach in the Media Communications Department of American Studies. Prior to that, I was a long-on university C W Post campus in the Media and Communications Program. I look forward to this opportunity to be able to serve the residents of Glencoe, and I definitely wish to thank the League of Republican Voters for having us here this evening. And my service and commitment to the city of Glencoe continues on, as I am still involved with some of the nonpartisan organizations here. Thank you so much.
Good evening, my fellow Glencoeers, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for making this opportunity possible. My name is Joanne Lee, and I am a member of the City Council. I am a longtime resident to Glencoe. However, I'd like to point out that I am not in Glencoe because I happen to be born here, but rather deliberate choice, by choice. I came to this town in two thousand and two. We were looking for a special community to raise our family, and we looked at many. We decided on Glencoe, and I have never regretted this decision. I have seen her and Dr. Liffens that made this town great. My children are all part of our school system. I have fortunately never come about Glencoe School. Despite this harm, my son I raised in another school, my older daughter who is a doctor in pharmacy, and I believe that all things are possible in Glencoe. My interest in my school children education has led into a long history service to the Glencoe school system. During the last twenty years, I have held many offices in many K D As. I have raised funds for seeing Sasha, tripped a racket for select car performance, and Yumisum activities. I think for the sake for our children. I have also served for many volunteer work with NASH and organizations devoted to serve food and secure family, as seniors who lack the ability to get around. I have not just taught the talk, but I have walked the walk, every step of the way. Now I have to take the best step by being a city council, so that I will serve all Glencoeers. My background is in finance. I've been financial control over twenty-three years. In my field work, I've become using analyzing financial data to plan and design operations to capture improvement in project. I compare budget versus action for as well as multi-train data to support efficiency and evolution financial soul. My mission to Glencoe makes my intentions very clear. I always wish to serve Glencoe. I do not operate any business in time which can profit from my decision. We have more time. In fact, we're more like a larger extended family. And like any other family, yet our time, we agree and time disagree, especially now during the hurricane season. My intention on Wednesday, November eighth after, will be family again, united in hope for a better Glencoe. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Kastakis. Thank you, L W B, thank you all for coming. I wasn't nervous up until probably five minutes ago, and saw my father walking into the door. Okay. I'm a lifelong resident here in Glencoe, graduated of class of nineteen ninety from this high school. Also graduated with a finance degree from C W Post, L I U, married to my wife Bessie, you know, son and daughter. My son just graduated from here actually in June. My daughter currently is in eighth grade or fifth grade school. I'm a local business owner for over thirty years here in Glencoe. So currently serving on the zoning board here in Glencoe. I'm a unrelenting supporter of our school system, a lifelong... I'm a lifelong member of Church of the Resurrection in Brooklyn, which started here in nineteen seventy-six in Glencoe as well. My focus really never is raised through families, friends, and future, that makes Glencoe and our families best yet to be. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to our hosts for putting this forum together. First and foremost, thank you to all the people up here on the stage. It's not easy to be up here to put yourself out there in front of all your friends and family, and in most cases strangers, so thank you all for joining in that. I am a lifelong resident of Glencoe, born and raised homeowner. I attended Glencoe schools, installed high school for graduating from St. Dominic's High School. I received my bachelor's in business administration from St. John's University before going onto law school. When I graduated law school, I went to work for my family, a law firm, which is in Glencoe, which I now run. At that time, when I was just starting my law career, I was asked to run the city council at that time, and I ended up becoming one of the youngest elected officials in city history. In fact, in two thousand and seventeen, I was elected. I served two years under Mayor Tankey's first administration, and then obviously I was re-elected two years ago with Mayor Pansyback. My life of service started probably when I was about fifteen. Also, my grandfather passed on to his kids, my father and his siblings. When I was about fifteen years old, I walked up to baseball field, decided to work in the stand, and ever since, I've been serving the community. I was a member of the Glencoe Junior Baseball and Softball Administration, current member of the Sons of the Hill League. I was a co-founder recently, about a year and a half ago, of the Glencoe Recreation Network, Recreational Director, which is worth over a hundred thousand dollars, realized sixteen months for our youth, and some facility upgrades. I have a staunch record of holding a lot of taxes. I've never once in my career avoided for increasing taxes, yet somehow we've worked out cutting down taxes, and I look forward to giving the city an opportunity, another run at this. Thank you.
Judy, I want to thank you for moderating this evening, and Regina and the lead for having us all. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gravy Farnin. I am the happy and middlest son of Ben and Mitzi John Farm in Glencoe. If all of you people recall, he was the commissioner of public safety back then, and mom was in the emergency room. So if you had a couple of rooms, you'd go see mom. I'm a lifelong resident of Glencoe, married to my wife Camille for over thirty years. We raised three daughters, Remy, Jillian, and Shelby, who attended this school, graduated from this school, went on to college, and are now productive citizens, one in Glencoe and two outside of Glencoe. I'm a person who walked these hollow halls from nineteen seventy-six to nineteen eighty, where I played lacrosse and football. I was honored to be a co-captain of the lacrosse team, where we excelled and beat the Garden City one yard junior year in the playoffs, and went on to play lacrosse. I'm an astonished supporter of our mayor for her leadership in holding a lot of taxes. I think it's a great accomplishment for the past few years, and as all of you know, I was appointed to the city council in February of this year, taking over Jocac Bianco's seat, where he took over Rich McCord's seat. And I would like to continue on to listen to everyone in this city for all their concerns and be able to answer their questions. I appreciate the time and here for me this evening, and thank you again, Judy.
Good evening, everybody. I want to first step aside by saying I'm not a politician. I'm John Zaro, a former here in Glencoe Hospital, went to Brooklyn School, Middle School here, developed a lot of bonds here, but my first memory is always with my family. My mom and dad were here from Italy when they were very young, ensured my sister and I what family was all about. They sacrificed so much for us and worked very hard to put us to school and made sure we had everything we needed. Also, growing up close with my aunts, my uncles, my grandparents, and cousins, we would see each other all the time. We always had to tell each other something to do. Family is something that was instilled in me, it's instilled in me at a very young age. And I didn't know at age five or six that I was about to make my family even bigger by going to schools here in the Glencoe school system, through Glencoe, Brooklyn School, and Middle School here, going to St. Rocco as my confirmation of my community, and then coming to the tower walls of Glencoe High School and making the bonds and growing me stronger. Friendships were made that would last a lifetime. The best part about being here was having so many of my close friends that were Italian, Mexican, Colombian, African-American, Puerto Rican, and Dominican-American, and learning different cultures, while growing up in the school system was the, oh, sorry, growing up in the school system was the best thing I learned. Growing in Glencoe, the diversity that we had here helped make me the man I am today. I went to New York Tech, graduated with a bachelor's degree in accounting, and while going to college, I worked full-time, and also, two of my years I worked at Tony Gall's Soap Foods. And when I, that's when I first forced, that's when I started first in helping out the community, helped so many people. He was always there to lend a helping hand to anyone, even if he didn't know him. I opened my first feature year at age twenty-four, and had Downtown Cafe for nineteen years, and running small businesses today at Downtown Cafe for children's cancer, that was over four hundred thousand dollars in fifteen years as a community, and also, I was a down station board member. Thank you.
Good evening, Arshis Silverman. Thank you all for being here, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. Many of you know me, but for those who don't, I moved to Glencoe about twelve years ago, I'm married to a Glencoe firefighter, I have an MBA in finance from NYU Stern Business School, and I've worked for over thirty years in financial services, performing financial analytics and budgeting and planning. I'm currently in my third term on the city council. I initially got involved in public service in order to bring transparency, accountability, equal treatment, and access to city hall for everyone. While serving as a city council member, I have driven fiscally responsible budgeting and planning practices to protect taxpayer dollars. Some of those initiatives include initiating a state comptroller's audit of the I D A, which resulted in one point six million dollars returned to the city of Glencoe at our school district. Revamping the city procurement policy to level the playing field so that companies can do business with Glencoe, and it's less about who you know, but rather what you have to offer. I exposed, I greatly reduced the practice of using one-shot regulations to club graduate polls, voted against peers in the tax debt twice in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty to keep taxes low, enacted Ocean Thirty legislation to keep workers safe on construction sites. I'm ready for reelection to build upon this foundation and to continue representing you. As I said from the beginning, a vote for me is a vote for you, because I will always work on your behalf. Thank you, and I look forward to all your questions tonight.
Hi, I want to thank you to the League of Women Voters for this forum, and to everyone here tonight. My name is Tricia Cebola. I'm a certified human resources professional, and I received a bachelor's degree in sociology from Queens College. I picked a Glencoe from Queens, the Nassau Queens or whatever I lived my whole life. Most weekends, we would drive to Bobby's school to say to our work for walks, and every time we went, the Glencoe originally met were so friendly that I immediately felt a sense of community I hadn't felt anywhere else before. And that's how I found on this site, Glencoe. When I moved here, my voice was more independent, so I had more time to devote to the things that were important to me. Like John said, I'm not a politician. I'm a regular person who's so easy to my community, and I realized that instead of complaining, I needed to act. So I began volunteering locally at NASH, A H R C, attending beach cleanups, and I joined the Democratic Committee. As someone who works at Glencoe, I offer the advantage of bringing a fresh set of eyes that can often spot innovative solutions and opportunities others may have overlooked. As a human resources business partner at Advantage Care Health Centers, a local nonprofit healthcare organization, I have key skills from the HR world that I can apply to solving the challenges we face in our city. And as the mother of college-age stragglers, handling the demands of three children while working full-time and advancing my education has taught me to clarify issues and find creative solutions. Given the opportunity to join this city council, my primary focus would be to enhance communication and collaboration, make Glencoe greater and cleaner, and foster the success of our small businesses. Successful government must be accessible to the voice of these individuals and community members. I'll focus on making orders where they're at and offer more opportunities to engagement. I'll focus on ways to meet orders where they're at and offer more opportunities to engagement. I'm invested in making our beaches and parks cleaner, safer, and more beautiful for families to enjoy. And lastly, small businesses are heart of Glencoe, and we need to create ways to encourage new businesses to open and support our existing businesses. I appreciate you all coming here tonight. I look forward to continue the conversation on how we can work together to make a better Glencoe. Thank you for that.
Hi. Hi, I'm Rodney Jenkins. Thank you to the Women of Glencoe, to everybody here. I'm not a politician, but I hope to be one in the company. I'm a co-founder of The Sweet Mayos, which is a women's website that advocates for women over the age of 40. Launched about 15 years ago, so I am a small business owner. I've also written, co-written two books, one was an Amazon bestseller. I have a bachelor's degree in finance with a marketing concentration. And I spent a 25-year career in advertising in Manhattan, winning numerous awards for digital strategy. And I've managed campaign budgets in excess of $100 million, down to the penny. I've performed numerous RFP requests as part of that, revenue projections, data analytics, and whatnot in highly regulated industries, in finance, pharmaceuticals, Central Bank of America, Merrill Lynch, Pfizer, to name a few. I have three beautiful children, Kylie, Finn, and Dylan. Thank you for being here. I'm a Glencoe High School graduate. My kids are third-generation Glencoe High School graduates. I'm a past PTA president and an active member of our schools. I coached several youth sports teams, including cheerleading, soccer, basketball, to name a few. While I was PTA president in the Brivens School, I spearheaded a new playground project and got a second new playground there. I also wrote an award-winning essay that resulted in several computers being donated to the Brivens School, so I'm very, very proud of that. During the pandemic, I received numerous recognitions as a hometown hero, by News 12, The Herald, and former Senator Warren. I'm a tireless lifelong volunteer. I'm currently on the Glencoe Finance Committee and Business Development Committee. I've been a committee member of the Dieter Davis Research Institute for 18 years. I'm an officer of both the Nassau County and my local Ladies Ancient Order of Hibernians. I'm on the St. Patrick's State Committee. I'm your emcee for the St. Patrick's State. I'm a top fundraiser for the Anna Society and an advocate for people with disabilities. As a lifelong resident, my marketing and finance background is a valuable asset, and my knowledge and skills can help promote local businesses, events, and initiatives. Thank you.
Last but not least, my name is Zora Pibbles, and I currently serve on the city council. I'm running for reelection. Why? Well, rather than go through all the list of many, many accomplishments and decades of experience, you can read all about that in the literature, I decided to share more of a personal number-one reason why I'm running for reelection. I grew up in Long Island, and when my husband and I found our forever home in Glencoe, we really knew it was home. It seemed like Glencoe was perfect for us. We loved the diversity, of course, the beauty, but also the uniqueness of the community. Everyone seemed to be always watching out and looking out and helping each other. One example, I worked in Lower Manhattan for many, many years. And I was blessed to come home on the ferry on September 11th. When I arrived, I was greeted with countless first responders, neighbors, and people I hadn't even met yet. It was amazing. I knew my family was growing, and that I knew that Glencoe was going to be my forever family. As I volunteered at my daughter's school, my family grew again. I volunteered for 10 years, and the St. Pat's family and the All Saints are also still a part of my family. Years later, when I had the opportunity to leave corporate America and serve as deputy mayor for four years, I loved coming to City Hall every day. The city employees did not become my work friends, they became my work family. It is amazing to be part of the employee system of Glencoe, where people celebrate each other's accomplishments and milestones, and they take great care and support each other in times of loss.
I'd also like to thank the water fairy. No idea who this is, but I ask for water, and it's alive, so I thank the water fairy. If you guys don't know who this is, please say it. We're now getting to the questions. I'm going to rotate the sequence of speaking and get every candidate the opportunity to be first, second, or third within 24 questions. So, if every candidate gives 90 seconds, it's going to be 18 minutes of questions, so we're only going to get to three or four, 20, 30, 40 questions. So, I'm going to ask the second tier if you can kindly offer some self-discipline about not taking your whole 90 seconds in the second tier. You will be in the first tier. Really fast, pretty quickly, give your 90 seconds. And audience, this is a volunteer request for me, so they don't have to do it, but in the interest of becoming good, you should notice. So, please hold all your applause. The first question is going to go to Mr. Piscatais, and everybody will be able to answer it, but he's not going to first. He was a part of it. Low-income families, if you are an incumbent, what have you done to help them? Other candidates, what will you do?
I'm sorry, let me repeat that question. We cannot hear you down there.
Oh, sorry. Low-income families, if you are an incumbent, what have you done to help them? And other candidates, what will you do? So, Mr. Piscatais is first.
Repeat that question one more time.
So, there are many low-income families in Glencoe. If you are an incumbent, what have you done to help them? And if you are a challenger, what will you do?
As an incumbent, and as a challenger, both, personally, we should try to get them involved, to realize some of the different opportunities that they do have out in Glencoe, to try to, so they can see would Glencoe really have the wherewithal? That would be the first steps as a lawyer.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Magarone.
So, as someone who deals with low-income families on a daily basis, the first thing that I realized is that a lot of times, they feel like they're not included and that nobody wants them to be included. So, it makes sense. It's getting them involved, getting them included. Perfect example is, the first time I was in the city council, a group of individuals from the St. Patrick's community came to me and said they wanted to start a soccer league. I asked them to come down to City Hall to meet with a former recreation director, Darcy Valier. They looked at me like I was freezing in the night, while pretending they were going to export their celebration cards at the door. I ensured that they weren't. About a week later, we had about 40 individuals in that meeting, and now they run the Orange's Soccer, I mean Soccer League in Old Line, and also our biggest charity to support the revenue. So, the biggest thing, as Mike said, it's been a different way. It's getting them involved, getting them down. We need to hear their complaints. We can't help those individuals that aren't willing to put themselves out there and come to us. The second thing is, the city already offers a lot of services to low-income, whether it be to the youth bureau, we have a lot of other stuff such as the Girls and Boys Club, which I grew up at, Glencoe Girls and Boys Club, which I grew up, was there every day after school. There's things that, there's certainly much more that we can do, and I would invite any conversation as to moving those families along to whatever we can do. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Zazaro. Oh, sorry, Mr. Farnett is first, and then Mr. Zazaro.
Thank you, Judy. As everyone knows, I was one of the founding fathers of the Glencoe Junior Lacrosse. And at that time, working with our recreation commissioner, Darcy Valier, we attracted all students and young people from all facets of life to come to our free clinics and to sign up and get involved with the youth sports. By doing that, the parents also got involved with us and then involved into the city and was always competitive by youth sports. We would go up and pick up the kids from Nation Drive and bring them to games. At that time, you were able to do that. We encouraged the kids to do their homework after school and to be involved in youth sports. Also, in recent time, if a family came into Glencoe and they had a financial situation, recently now at the waterfront, they opened up two buildings for housing, for low-income housing. And I know they did that in the Village Square, in the Jewish Panzerback, to get that filled up so that families could flourish and thrive in Glencoe. And homeownership is very important as far as the growing process is concerned. And we allow these families to have that opportunity to not only have homeownership, but also to be involved in the community with the youth sports. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Zazaro next.
Okay, over the past 10 years, we've seen a influx of housing being built. We had a lot of apartments being built, waterfront, downtown. But I think they haven't, I think they built for high-income housing. They really didn't look for affordable, and I don't think they built enough. And I think the way that they average out what affordable housing is, they use a, the way they average out, they put one year to the same category with low-budget housing. The median price was too high for actually low-income housing to be affordable for any of them. Like, we are losing a lot of kids, a lot of adults, a lot of grandparents that can't afford to stay here anymore. We need to do better for them, and we can't just promise billionaires free pilots and free lifetime taxes without taking care of our own. They're ruining our infrastructure, our water is getting depleted, our fire departments can't come, police department needs more people. But we need to take care of our low-income housing, affordable housing, for people that are low-income. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Silverman.
Thank you. First, in order to help people, you have to put yourself in their shoes. And I grew up in a family with a single-income parent, and my mother was a stay-at-home mother, my father was a public school teacher. We did live paycheck to paycheck. So, I understand what it's like when you might not have food at the end of the month or, you know, be able to get the things that the other kids have. And being aware of that makes you realize how important it is to serve those people. And since I've been in office, I've had the opportunity to be able to help. And some of those things that I've done are, I have joined the Nassau County EOC Board, which helps low-income families across Nassau County find housing, have programming. And it's been very fulfilling for me to see what we can do for the community. In addition, I've built relationships with people in the private sector in utilities, where they have programs that give subsidies to low-income families and brought them into Glencoe, connected them with NASH, connected them with the EOC, so that families in need can get the subsidies that are available for them. I've also proposed legislation, where we change our own codes to increase the amount of affordable housing that is required when builders come in and develop in Glencoe. And I hope to see that come to fruition through our master plan. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Pearl.
Hi. So, in my 30-year career, 30-plus-year career, I've worked with nonprofits that serve underserved populations. And one of the biggest key keys to getting, well, keys to helping is accessibility, right? Making information, there's so many resources out there, making the resources available to them in their language, so it's accessible to them, being accessible to them so they can communicate their needs. Oh, I keep that story. Just being accessible and providing information in a way that's accessible to them, so you can connect them to resources. Thank you.
Ms. Jenkins.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate basically what other people said. I mean, with a marketing background, I think, you know, getting the information out is really critical, making sure that you're doing it in multiple, multiple languages, whether it's fires, whether it's social media, whether it's, you know, going to communities, churches, synagogues, other places of worship. But, you know, we have amazing programs in here, here in Glencoe for youth. You know, more than 15 different organizers, and many of them offering scholarships and very low, low, low-cost things for families to do. But, you know, certainly, again, outreach is key. As Marsha mentioned, the EOC here offers summer camp. I know there's lots of opportunities for low-cost things for families, and we just need to get that message out.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Pibbles. Turn off the mic that I'm using. You are using a soap. The only thing I wanted to add is, one of the proudest accomplishments when I was IDA executive director, working with the CBA, we negotiated a very, very difficult situation where all the families at Stanley Park, their pilots aspiring, and the owners wanted to make a significant change and invest in a different kind of housing there. So, I personally worked with the lawyers on both sides. We held that group accountable, and they were required to improve the area, make it more manageable for all the families, and actually reduce the rent, which gave significant relief to all those families, and I'm really proud that that area remains.
Thank you. Mr. Agudiz.
Yes, direct assistance to low-income families from Miss Pal Glencoe. The opportunities are few and far between because of how small we are. So, most of our help comes indirectly. By keeping taxes down, we keep rents down, and we also promote small businesses, creating an environment where small businesses can thrive and low-income families can find work. Other ways we directly, indirectly support low-income people is through private partnerships, such as NASH. We support and promote them, the Predigible Territorial Center, and the Housing Authority, which is obviously under Glencoe, who work very closely with them. More individually, I'm a member of St. Paul's Church. I support them both financially and with time, and we have a monthly fellowship outreach where we feed the underprivileged.
Thank you. Ms. Piscatais. So, for better or worse, we're a community here, and it takes all kinds of people to make this place work, right? And I just, I cannot look at a kid and not do something for that and thing me that. So, first of all, on a personal level, I've raised about $30,000 for NASH, the food pantry. I've delivered food for the food pantry for many, many years now, and I'm happy to do that. I've also personally helped six families this year with housing. One of them was actually a family that the head of the household was a vet, so I worked through Tony Jimenez for that family. And I've worked with the Housing Authority to help other families. And these are people that have children in our community. I also run something called the Education Foundation, where we have after-school programs. I make certain, we have scholarships available for children that want to participate. You just, you never want to leave the kid out. I think through my children, a lot of families have family that reached out. In fact, I'm trying to work with a family right now to help them find more stable housing. I've also worked to sponsor kids in our camp program because it's so important that kids, particularly for low-income families, have something to do in the summer. And I have to say, the city has been amazing at helping me get kids' place through the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Agudiz. Delia.
Thank you for the question. I echo the sentiments of Daniela and Marsha as well. And the way in which I'm interpreting the question, you know, what would we do? So, as a challenger, I think after low-income families... So as a challenger, I think after low-income families have been identified, I want to learn what resources are available from the city that can help these low-income families. And I want to, after we identify that, you know, and everyone kind of mentioned already, you know, access to information, I want to see about where the areas of growth can occur, right? You know, to Danielle's point, we all live in Glencoe. Low-income families, we're still people. We go to the same schools, we go to the same stores, we drive the same streets. So I think even as an educator, having helped, you know, low-income families over my entire career, once I know what the need is and we can identify that need and hopefully we can get maybe some more city funding and or maybe there's opportunity for state or federal funding to try to grow the programs that are already in place. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Shee.
Glencoe is very good. There are three generations of families who's lived here. I agree, want to keep families together. First of all, let's consider the seniors. I say if you have land to build it for outside to come in, then definitely we'd be able to have the majority of people who cannot afford a certain to live there. We should have a little land to build senior housing for our old Glencoe seniors. Second, the younger Glencoeers who cannot even afford to stay in Glencoe. Majority of the kids are moving out. I wish to work with a new developer so that we can have more affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, I'm going to limit it to one match. Our downtown has been in a downward spiral. Do you have a plan to revitalize it? And what kinds of businesses would you advocate to to bring it up? First, Ms. Silverman.
Thank you. So I think first and foremost is we have to look at how we use Glencoe's IDA. In the past, it's the agency that gives tax breaks. In the past several years, it's primarily given tax breaks to large developers for residential development. An IDA is named Industrial Development Agency for industry. It's supposed to promote the creation of jobs through businesses. So if we give tax breaks to businesses who come to Glencoe to create jobs, that will simulate our economy and that will revitalize our downtown Glencoe. And that is the purpose of the IDA, is to simulate the economy and create jobs. So I propose to refocus our IDA on to attract businesses downtown, the right businesses that can bring other businesses and really have a thriving revitalized downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Pearl.
Thank you. I, oh. I agree with Marsha on that one. And also, I would like to look into bringing, um, facilities to Glencoe, maybe a destination for people from out of town to come in, have their, utilize our local restaurants and bars before they stay shut and then go home. I think that would be one way to bring some, you know, more business to the city. And I also want to just look at why the business is not failing. Like, what is the real reason? Like, do some real research about what the real reasons are behind it. Because a lot of times, you throw money at a problem and it's the wrong problem. So I would like to really get some raw data about why the business is not failing and not just associate it with the essence. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jenkins next.
I think the first thing we need to do is reduce a lot of the bureaucratic hurdles. And I know that the current city council members and thank you to everybody on that have really lowered the cost of businesses entering downtown. We have eighteen businesses that are located in downtown alone. Within the past two years, we've got thirty-four. But they can't survive unless everybody here supports them. And I think that's a major problem. I've been around so many times, you drive around on Tuesday night at nine o'clock and the lights are off, it's shut. You know, to Teresa's point, we can make this a destination. If you have entertainment, I was on the Long Island Board, Board Director for the Long Island Youth Qualifying Fair for many, many years. And I think if we had an active, vibrant arts and entertainment community along with the restaurants, and then they offered some low-cost meals, we can get more people here. But businesses don't succeed unless people here will support them. And, you know, unfortunately, we're in a tough economy.
Thank you. Ms. Peoples.
Well, I'm excited that we are in a period of renewed optimism. I think some of the optimism is due to the fact that our Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Bid, our Hispanic Chamber are actively engaged with one another. They all have a common mission and they are actively, really, the Chamber itself enrolled ninety-nine new members in the last two years. This is a really good sign and it means more and more success. I agree with what Ronnie said, people keep on asking for things, but they have to support the businesses when they come in. You do need a good mix of small local businesses, but you also need some anchor stores. So I think that is on the cusp. There's a lot of things in the hawker and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. McRus.
Yeah, to keep it short, I would just like to mention, of the eighteen businesses that opened in the Business Improvement District, they're very diverse. We have a major bank, Chase Bank, lots of spas, a baseballway, fitness, there's rumble boxing, a pharmacy, a restaurant. So although Glencoe downtown could be doing better, I believe dividends are on the way. And I believe it takes some time for all the work that we've put in and the bid and the other organizations, it's going to take a little while to pay off. But it's starting to pay dividends now. And I say just look out for the next two years.
Thank you. Ms. Tsukas, say it again.
So I keep my business right in the heart of the downtown and I've been on the bid for fifteen years now. I have been working honestly for the past year at trying to, listen, it always works, but I've been working really hard on this thought from Smile, Smile, Down to Sons of Italy to try to revitalize that street. And it's not easy work, but every week I walk it, I talk to those business owners. And we are making changes there, but it definitely takes a lot of work. The mayor knows, we've been working together on this. It's definitely a partnership. We need to reach out. We need to do our part as a city to make the place inviting, safe, lit, and easy to walk. The owners of the stores have to do their part and keep their stores up to date. Nobody wants to rent a store that, you know, looks too shabby. We're working on things like new awnings, sorry to break your time as well. But we have to continue to push all of the owners in the downtown and do our part as a city.
Thank you. Next is Mr. McRus.
I agree with a lot of everything that's been said so far. You know, with work that the Chamber of Commerce is doing, the work that the bid is doing, and the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce alike, I think we could also take a look at the downtown Glencoe Business Improvement District map. I think we might have the ability to expand it. This way we can incorporate more businesses into the fold. And I think maybe if opportunity presents itself, we can bring all stakeholders to the table. Although any, any city council can't be held accountable for the way in which a landlord decides to create lease agreements with a prospective tenant. I think we might have an opportunity to try and give some reason for more folks to kind of build their businesses in the city of Glencoe. I'd be willing to revisit that process in addition to, and as I said earlier, to find new pathways to make it cleaner, to make it bigger, to make it more successful. And I think we really can work on making Glencoe a larger business landing spot, not just Glencoe as a landlord. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shee.
Okay, I agree with Joe. However, I would try to work with landlord and tenant to create in businesses that what our community need and wants. Yes, we do have a lot of businesses that have opened, but they cannot survive if our community do not support them. So that's what we're trying to look at.
Thank you. Ms. Pal, Mr. McRus.
Thank you. Yes, I definitely have to agree with many. Chamber of Commerce has been doing a lot, getting people out, supporting businesses. Again, eighteen businesses alone are opening up in the downtown area. It's a pretty big number. Village Square also is completely full. It seems, you know, to be pretty busy. You know, just to mention, you know, bringing in new businesses and attracting other businesses to come in really depends a lot on all of us getting out there supporting. Not just on Friday night, you know, it's five more often. And I know it's a time where it's financially difficult. But again, we always have to think about supporting ourselves first, which is, you know, supporting Glencoe business. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McRus.
So I'm going to answer the second part of the question, which is what businesses first? What businesses would you look to bring? There's a common misunderstanding that I see all the time out there, especially on social media and those type of forums where people seem to think that the city council or the mayor have a say in what type of businesses that these landlords, strength deals with. We have no say in that. We have no say in who's going to rent someone a space for a new grocery store or whatever it may be. The other portion part of it, the most important part is the first thing that we did, that I pushed for when I got into, into office, was to revitalize our quite literally ancient code, which prevented anything from a barber shop or a nail salon from opening downtown without spending twenty-five thousand dollars for the cleaning board. That's kind of the whole way. That's where you see these businesses popping up. The next thing that I would think we need to do is we need to incentivize these landlords to revitalize their buildings in order to attract new businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garner.
As a member of the IDA, the Village Square in the IDA is completely, hundred percent occupied just recently with the work with the IDA. They redid over Starbucks and the movie theater. So it's keeping those people who are employed at those stores and the movie theater going.
Thank you. Ms. Zazara.
Not many people know downtown as much as I do. I've worked there for nineteen years, going in the Bruce Street Garage, in and out twice a day. For nineteen years, so that's quite a big number. Also, being on the downtown board, a member for five years. We were basically a bipartisan group. We didn't know who was Democrat, who was Republican. But we tried to do as much as we could on a straight, straight budget. But common sense usually prevails for us. And we didn't have issues. We'd all, we'd talk it out. Like, parking is a main issue. Curb cuts, we didn't do curb cuts. It's not, doesn't cost much, but nothing gets done. The parking garage, expensive, yes. But the safe, we need money from the safe. We need to petition the safe to get money for a new parking garage. You can't just put bandages on a parking garage every year. Every year for ten, fifteen, twenty years, it's like, that's all they've been doing. We need to, we need to maybe build a one-way road. That's one of the things we talked about, the bid, from the architecture firm all the way to up in there. And put the one-way blockings, we have more parking. We need more parking to help downtown businesses.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go on to question three. And for question three and four, it's going to be more like a lightning round. You get thirty seconds and everybody can answer. You know, you take thirty seconds when everybody answers. So, number three, as a councilperson, if you are faced with an item to go on that involves a personal conflict regarding a family member or a lawsuit, what would you do?
I am number three, I suppose, right? No, no.
Mr. Garner.
I recuse myself of any family association.
Okay, Ms. Tsukas.
Again, I would recuse myself of any situations.
Ms. Zazara.
I do see, I would recuse myself. And that would be it.
Okay, Ms. McRus.
I actually have a long, known history of recusing myself from things that I don't even have a conflict with, it appears to conflict, so.
Okay, Ms. Jenkins.
I don't have much family in Glencoe, but I want to recuse myself.
Ms. Silverman.
I think we can all sit just still. If there's an issue, if something comes before the board, I would recuse myself.
Okay, Ms. Peoples.
I agree with everybody. I've recused myself.
Thank you. Mr. McRus.
I would recuse.
See you, guys. So I'm Mr. McRus.
Before I recuse myself, I would let my opinions be known to my fellow councilpeople. We work as a body and then I would recuse myself.
Okay, Ms. Shee.
I actually would let the person go first and I would excuse myself too.
Okay. Ms. Tsukas, it's Scalyola, and I apologize for getting the name wrong.
No worries, it's not easy. If you, if you have a personal interest in something, you should recuse yourself, for sure.
Okay. Second, if you have a question, again, thirty seconds, everybody answers. How do you feel about defunding the Glencoe Police Department? And, sorry, Ms. Jenkins? How do you feel about, about defunding the Glencoe Police Department? The first question is Ms. Jenkins.
Absolutely not. I believe in increasing our police officers, fully support them. I know we hired seven new officers this year. I believe in increasing the training and getting them the best vehicles and everything that they need possible to help keep our city safe.
Okay. Next is Ms. Silverman.
I believe that we must invest in our police department so that they can continue the community-based policing practices that they do so well that they're a model for other municipalities. And I just want to thank the gentleman back there for keeping us safe today and every day.
Okay. Next, Ms. Peoples.
My record shows how strongly I feel about our wonderful police department. So I would be the opposite of defunding. I'm proud that we provided them with new vehicles that they need. They get trained. They always have amazing candidates. So I support them hundred percent.
Okay, Ms. McRus.
I support the Glencoe Police Department completely fully. And I continue to thank you for your service today and all the service that you provided over the years. And I'm a percent of those.
Ms. McRus.
I have a vested interest in this matter against an retired Glencoe police sergeant. I ran firearms training division for many years. And there's a reason that the Glencoe police are the largest line in our budget. And they're the largest line because they're worth every penny. Glencoe would be a very different place if it weren't for the Glencoe police. You have Nassau County and you never get the level of service. You never get the level of interaction and the bonds in the community.
Thank you. Ms. Shee.
I will support them. They all keep us safe and all answer this, okay? Thank you.
Ms. Tsukas, Scalyola.
There you go. Um, I wholeheartedly support the police. And I just want to add, I echo a lot of the sentiment here. But in addition to keeping us safe, they do a lot of things that I don't think people even understand and they're in our school district. In fact, I'll never forget, one of my daughters, for her graduation from Latin fifth grade, one of our police officers was a keynote speaker because they had created such a bond with the kids. So it's way beyond just keeping us safe. They are a real big, important part of our community.
Thank you. Mr. Garner.
It should be obvious since the son of the former police commissioner, I'm backing the blue all the way. Not only is our police department well-known, they help out the kids in the community. They play sports with them, they help them with their problems, they talk to them, they're mentors. You see the police officers in the downtown district and they're associated with the business owners as well. People are down there shopping or enjoying our restaurants. They're keeping us safe twenty-four seven.
Thank you. Ms. Zazara.
The Glencoe Police Department is one of the biggest things that we have. They go over and beyond in any instance that I've ever seen. And I've dealt with them for many years when I had my business downtown. So they'll be, they'll be funding if I don't. Thanks.
Mr. McRae.
I'm lucky enough to get to work with the Glencoe police on a daily basis. And they are nothing short of spectacular. Not only in keeping us safe, because I can promise you that there are some nice and good people around that maybe live in our neighborhoods, but they know better than to do what they're going to do. It's not, you know, not to straighten pack in Glencoe because our officers all know who they are on a named-to-many basis. I also have the opportunity of working with them. I'm a coordinator of the Glencoe Team Corps, where they volunteer at a time of coming and help us make these cases out of criminal law.
Thank you. So it sounds like it's unanimous. You all heard it here. Okay, the next question. What are your thoughts on the two thousand twenty-four budget that was passed last night? Your step is no doubt. What are your thoughts on the twenty twenty-four budget that was passed last night?
I don't really have much to say about that because it's obviously the first time I can do. So it's probably the couple will be answer that.
Mr. McRae.
We still take a look at it. You know, it was approved last night. It was just, it wasn't released out long ago. So we need to take a hard look at it and see where we can make improvements. And we'll go from there, but I would probably defer to the others, absolutely.
Mr. Sogazi, Skylarilla.
So I said this all last night. Anybody can look at this next meeting. With any of these budgets, there's, there's risk and opportunity to win. There's, look, we have risks in this budget because we're counting on some money coming from R S R, and we're using money that they're going to give us as a one-time payment or a portion of that. However, on the other side, this year, we really benefited from interest rates. We were only expecting about a hundred thousand and wound up with a million dollars, or we're going to wind up with about a million dollars in interest. And we used that to take care of where we were short on the employee health benefits. So there's sort of been all of this. I voted yesterday. I honestly, nobody wants to raise taxes. Nobody gets into this job and says, I'm dying to raise taxes. Everybody, I think, wants to look at the information and try to make the best decision possible to keep the city running and keep your all the amenities that you have and make the taxpayers happy.
Okay. Mr. Silverman. Mr. Silverman.
Thank you. I also spoke last night at the meeting. So if people want to watch the video, my comments are there as well. But agreeing with Danielle on a lot of it, that the budget is a complex process. And of course, nobody wants to raise taxes. And I'm pleased that we are not raising taxes for the general public. So that's really a positive. Where I do see a couple of shortfalls are losing those one-time revenues. You know, this year in two thousand twenty-three, we did use one-time revenue that was unshored. And we did get eight hundred thousand dollars back from the county on IDA payments that were overpaid over the last ten years. We have about an eight, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar deficit today. If that hadn't been used for operating expenses this year, if that had been collected when it was supposed to in the last ten years, we wouldn't have that deficit today. So it's how you use those one-time revenues is really important. And I am concerned about using one-time revenues at any time, and they aren't in the budget for next year. So I'm hopeful that some of the risks that are in the budget can be offset by future opportunities, as all budgets do have risks and opportunities. It's really a balance of managing it and making sure that the budgeting process is not a once-a-year exercise that we vote on once in October. That it's continuous that we're managing it and keeping an eye on both expenses and revenues so that we're on target throughout the year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zazara.
I would agree with Danielle and Marsha a hundred percent what they said. But I also, I wish there was more in, I know they're adding more water, but I think we should add even more because past couple of years, you buy more from Moses out. And I really feel like, especially to see around the world, how water, how valuable water is. I think we should actually value it even more, just so we're not learning about something bad after we leave home.
Mr. Farner.
Mr. Zazara mentions about the water, but everybody has to understand that these past few years, our mayor's been working very hard to protect our water, getting the filters changed and so forth. No one wants to do taxes. Everybody wants to save money. All the department heads put together their budget. They trimmed whatever they could so that it would not be a burden on the citizens of Glencoe to pay extra taxes. It was said we've had two great years, and we're going to continue with two more great years once the mayor is elected again.
Okay. Mr. Kassakis.
I would fully agree with what Councilman Farner has just said. On top of everything, I would also say that the city councilor and the mayor, they're fantastic for putting this budget together. Again, you know, coming out with zero tax increase for the future, for next year is just a, you know, it's a big plus for us all. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McRae.
So obviously, a zero percent tax increase is the most important thing, especially for our seniors. And we do have one of the larger elder populations in Glencoe who enjoy our homeowners are elderly. They're on fixed income. Twenty-five dollars a month is a lot to them. It's a, it's a couple of days of food at the grocery store, whatever it may be. The biggest, the other parts of the budget though is our capital borrowing that we do every year. What you've done here is pay assets for us all. We've done the last two years if we have cut the irresponsible borrowing. When you borrow substantial sums of money, that adds to your next year's expenditures covering your debt service. And we have, we have had a tight renewal in the last two years. We can, we've kept it under five million at all times. We're going to continue to do so. And that's what allows us to keep our taxes flat. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens.
I agree with Greeney. He laid out exactly how I feel about the budget. I have complete confidence in my vote in the budget, especially because Mayor Pam and her department heads have demonstrated an amazing ability to manage expenses. Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins.
Yeah, I just have to thank everybody, the mayor, the controllers certainly, for working on that budget. And it's part of one-shot revenues. So, I mean, certainly it's not a best practice in terms of accounting, but you really have to look at the economy. You know, this skyrocketing inflation, if we choose to give eight hundred thousand back to the taxpayers to put it in their pockets because we need it, I commend you and thank you, and I fully support the budget.
Mr. Perdola.
I agree with Danielle and Marsha. And this is the one idea that, it was Marsha's idea. She stated it last night, that it might be wise to plan ahead more than a year. Look forward to maybe three years, or five years. It's a good plan for the future. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Silverman.
I think I already answered that question, but I'm not going to answer it.
Have I missed somebody?
Yes, you missed, Mr. Manjus.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Sogazi, sorry.
Yes. I support the budget. I approve it along with the rest of the city council. The passion, obviously. Mayor Pam is back, has a track history of managing budgets. And I feel like she will manage this budget just fine. I'll add one comment. There was some high-profile criticism of the budget alleging that there was a tax increase. And I, I concern that your tax bill will be within a dollar of what it was next year. There's no tax increase in this budget.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I want to give the candidates some credit for voting. We've all gotten through six questions. The last question, I'm going to give thirty seconds. We're going to end a little late, but we got through six questions. Okay. The last question is, every administration promises tax transparency. What will you do to ensure that that happens and the public knows what the city council is doing? And we're going to start with Mr. Silverman.
Thank you. I think transparency is so important. The government is here to serve the people. And if people don't know, the public does not know what's going on, we're doing something wrong. So when I got into office, we didn't even have transparency. And it was like minutes of meetings and agendas on our website. And I asked that we do that when I first sat in office. And now we have some things like that in place today that increase and improve transparency. And there's a lot, I'm out of time. There's a lot more we can do, and I would like to continue to work and propose more measures, thank you.
Mr. Sogazi.
So I'm easily findable. If anybody has any question, ask me. I mean, when I'm watching my kids play soccer, people are asking me. If I know the answer, I'm happy to tell you. If I don't know the answer, I will go find it for you. I also encourage people, I think people ask a lot of the time and they don't realize that you can reach actually there and have to spend some time looking for them. I urge people to come to the meetings. You know, election time, everybody wants to come to the meetings. But the truth is, you have a meeting, almost everything will be, and you can find out a lot of information there. But I'm all for transparency. It only needs to size.
Okay. Mr. McRae.
I agree with what Danielle has said. Folks need to attend the pre-council meetings. We don't get to speak at those meetings, but we find a lot. There's a lot of decisions that occur in the executive discussion after the pre-council meeting ends. But the pre-council meeting is the precursor for the council meetings. If you really want to learn something, definitely attend that meeting. And everything is readily available on the website. And the agendas aren't due similar seven days later unless there are anyone or two more items. So it's about engagement, I think. So that the information is there to show up. Thank you.
Major J.
Well, I love talking, I love to listen. I would probably do something with me every week. And it's very important to go to the pre-council meeting since I can be going this year. And you actually learn a lot more than in council meeting. Because there's a lot of stuff in pre-council meeting that's not show up at council meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Kassakis.
Transparency is a huge factor in our administration, especially nowadays when everybody has one of these. All we have to do is just look up everything that is there, basically pace the course, and telling us when certain events are up, when council meetings are up, pre-council meetings, so on and so forth. Also, all the phone numbers are available for people to find out as well if they need to know more facts. So again, transparency is readily available, especially in this administration.
Mr. McRae.
I think the city's always been very transparent. The problem's been that it wasn't until probably the last five years or so that the city came into the twenty-first century as far as technology and all that stuff. I mean, when I first became a city councilor in two thousand and eighteen, I don't even think our building department had the ability to scan blueprints into their computers. And that was in two thousand and eighteen. I mean, that's crazy. So now we have the ability to screen everything. I think that's opened up a lot of people's ability to view, to see what's going on and see what's going on with, um, definitely watch the pre-council meetings.
Okay. Mr. Farner.
Transparency is a main best practice, not only in government, but also in private business. You can go to the pre-city council meeting so many years ago. That was not a regular thing. You can see here, the gym in the morning, at four A M., roll the blade down, and call this point and ask me a question. If I can't answer, I'm going to listen to you. I'm going to absorb any concern that you have, take in the question, do my research, and get an answer for you.
Okay. Mr. Zazara.
Transparency, transparency is a hundred percent key, especially government. As far as Councilman McRae said, City of Glencoe came to the twenty-first century about five years ago. But at the recent council meeting, one, one, two ladies mentioned that they had, when they wanted to see records, they had to go down in the basement to grab them in a box, and the paperwork was downstairs. I think they need to come up to the twenty-first century a bit more with transparency in that regard.
Okay. Mr. Perdola.
So in my role as a citizen's partner, I always encourage our leaders to be transparent because transparency builds trust. And, you know, a lot of times people want something, and sometimes the answer is no. And when you explain why the answer is no, there's a better understanding, and it builds trust instead of trying to deceive people and, and, you know, just give them what they want here. So I think it's really important to be honest and open even when it's not an answer that people want.
Okay. Mr. Marakusi.
Yes, as far as transparency goes, I will continue to do what I've been doing for the last two years, which is to be transparent. Along those lines, one of the issues that has been coming up over the last few months is the issue of term limits and time extensions. As far as I know, myself and candidate Perdola are just two unknown candidates that are on the record in an open city council meeting who said what we actually are for. So part of transparency is letting the community know where we stand and not advocating for general, open-ended resources.
Okay. Mr. Jenkins.
As a marketing professional, I definitely think we can do more. You know, we're doing rate shots, in fact, and things are posted. They're posted in a tiny manner. But there could be more dissemination of information. Always, it's always looking for improvements. Certainly, some of our seniors may not have access to, you know, websites. They're not comfortable with it. I know there's a lot of E S L families here. And I think, you know, we could do a lot to improve to help get more information, maybe more one-on-ones. We've hit some of the communities, the Hispanic community, certainly, the seniors, to get that information out.
And Mr. Stevens.
Some people mentioned, I think the goal should be to get more and more engagement. And I'm really appreciative of folks that came out tonight. In a happy environment, when the residents are happy, they don't really get engaged as much. So it's really, really important, good news, bad news. You should really pay attention to what's going on. The city does follow the guidelines and post all the information. Residents are encouraged to sign up for alerts. So you can sign up to just the topics that you want, and you get alerts. So live streams, alerts, all those things are really good to keep you apprised.
Thank you. Thirty seconds is short, and I appreciate you guys sitting to it. Before we get closing statements, I'd like to remind voters that Election Day is Tuesday, November seventh, at your normal polling race. Early voting begins Saturday, that's tomorrow, which is also Golden Day. If you know somebody who hasn't registered, they can register.
Saturday.
Oh, Saturday, sorry. Tomorrow's Friday. Saturday is Golden Day. You know, I apologize if I'm not able to, but I have a lot of candidates with a rotation that we're trying to make fairer than that. So on Saturday is Golden Day. If you know somebody who hasn't registered, they can register and vote on Saturday in person at the, I think, any of the early polling places, certainly before elections. So that's a one-time thing. And it's only just passed by the New York State Legislature about a month ago. So early voting starts on Saturday. It runs through Sunday, November fifth. And you can vote at City Hall in Glencoe or any of the twenty-seven polling places in this town. A recording of this forum will be available on our YouTube channel, L W B P A N, I hope tomorrow. And now we're going to go to closing statements. And we're doing it in the same order, so we begin with Mr. Marakusi.
Yes, in closing, we heard a lot of the accomplishments, a lot of the accomplishments that we provided over the last two years. So as a city, one of the most important things we think about is our families and children. We have made improvements to our parks, Morgan Park, the seawall, bathrooms, the path, city stadium for where our kids recreate, new bleachers, new benches, new infrastructure, roofs, concession stands, roofs, concession stands, stank park, there's pickleball. So when people say, what is there to do for the kids? There's plenty to do for the kids, but the kids have to be self-starters and they have to get out there, use our facilities. Over the last two years, we've helped businesses. We've kept packs burning down and we've loosened the codes, regulations and codes that make it difficult to open new businesses. And in closing, I would just like to say that if you want to see these improvements continue for the next two years, please support Team Panzenbeck on November 7th.
I want to thank you all for coming out tonight and listening to us make our case for your votes. A little over 17 years ago, Tommy and I made the decision to move back here when we wanted to buy a house and raise a family. It was an easy decision for us to make, and I have never second-guessed that decision. I have a truly vested interest in the success of Glencoe. And one of the greatest things my parents and my in-laws had is that all of their children decided to stay in Glencoe. That is actually the hope I have for my own children and my nieces and nephews. I want them to do the same. But for that to happen, we have to continue to make positive change here. We need to continue to work on illegal housing. We need to help the school district thrive whenever possible. We need to push commercial property owners to get their storefronts rented. And there are ways that we are working on to make that happen. We also need to make a real push for better transportation options because most of us do not have the luxury of working here in Glencoe. As a community, we deserve officials who want what's best for the city without any other motivation. I'm not afraid of hard work. I make a conscious effort to hear people out, and I will work with whoever necessary to achieve positive results here. I may disagree with some people on points, but that doesn't mean I won't listen and it doesn't mean I won't be respectful. My name is Danielle F. Zeydola. To continue working hard for all Glencoeers and to make Glencoe a place we are all proud to call home. Thank you again so much for listening.
First, I want to begin by saying thank you to the leading voters once again for hosting this event. And thank all of you for coming here because clearly, those of you that are in front of us and those folks on my left and my right, we're the ones that are actively engaging and we want to make a difference in our community because our community matters. I think we can all agree on that. I've been serving the public for the past 17 years. I've been educated for over 20. I work in media and continue to do so. I'm about to serve the needs of the public. And I think about my media background and I think about how we act in the interest, the convenience, and the necessity of the public. When I think about our occupation here as county council folks or those that are running for council, that's why we're here. We're here to run in the interest, the convenience, and the necessity for you. We are those voices for you if, in fact, you decide to elect us go ahead. And I think a lot of others' concessions about what the city council actually has the ability to do or not do. So if elected, I will ensure that your voice will be heard and I'm hoping to be that voice for you. I'm engaged in change and I've said in the past, I like to plan, I do it with passion, and I do it with the appropriate personnel, if I can find them, unless they're already next to me. And ultimately, the public input is really what it's all about. Because without you, your participation, we can't create real change. And that's what's really important. And I could look at my notes for a thousand years, but when I think about all the issues that plague the city of Glencoe, some of which hasn't changed, I think change begins with all of you, but really all of us. There's a difference between when we hear these crunch phrases, talk in the talk and walk in the walk. But I'm a planner. I like to plan three, five, seven, 10 years down the road, not just for myself, but for the people that I serve. And those people that I serve are your children and children from all around the tri-state area, everything in Cuyahoga, Western. So I thank you for the opportunity and I thank you for listening and feel free to contact me for any questions. And thanks once again. Good luck.
Thank you again to the lead-upwoman voters who hosted this event, my fellow participants for the vibrant exchange of ideas, and all you who care enough about community to be here. I am also there for the doorsman for the Ellen Legacy, the Italian American House for Action Community, and AFL-CIO Federation, LEC. My name is Julie Robert Joralee and I hope for your votes. I have expressed my love for this town through my actions, not my words, but this doesn't mean I don't want to be a member. I do, and I will always hold to your comment and idea. Stop me anytime, gas station, CVS, HeadSmart. I don't care where. Your concern and my concern. In conversation, I've been told by many of you that the front does not have anything to offer young people, that young people have nowhere to go for recreation. I wish to change that. I am also part of Glencoe and last time, the selection detail store, available to us. I wish to change that as well. And finally, I want to address something that's most for me, keeping family together in Glencoe. As I said, since I've been here, I have got to see, hear, and feel the difference that this makes this town great. This is just one example. Glencoe is multi-generation town with many cases. Three or more generations said they need to leave, and young Glencoeers said they can't stay. Families are being torn apart. This is an issue we must address and prioritize for Glencoe. I am up for the challenge. My professional experience is very much nearer the experience under the counter as a member of the city council. I have the will and I have the spirit to help our community, our people. I am also exceptional. Our captain, Mayor President, are very appreciative of Glencoe. In 21st year in Glencoe, I never seen any cabinet have been as highly regarded, financially as George Soros. I believe this as a member of his team, I accomplished more of my fellow Glencoeers. So to my extended family, to my fellow Glencoeers, I have suffered a message in a few words. I am Joralee, captain of the city council. I am for you. I am with you. I am of you. Like we say in my household, ye the people, for better Glencoe people. Thank you.
As a 51-year resident of Glencoe, I've never seen so much love, you know, come from one administration as I have with Team Panzenbeck. This is why I chose to live with such an amazing administration. I've seen a lot in the past, shut my mouth, done the best I could, and lived, lived it, paid my taxes, dues, and everything else. From what I believe in is forging, you know, relationships, you know, between Glencoe local business owners and its government. I believe in investing more in the youth and making sure that our seniors have all the accessibilities that they deserve. I'd love to work closer with our Chamber of Commerce and also Hispanic Chamber of Commerce along with our citizens to build stronger communities. And basically in closing, I basically want our residents to have the confidence to invest in themselves by investing their dreams in Glencoe. Again, I'm Michael Kassakis, running along with Team Panzenbeck, and I won't be concerned with you. Thank you.
I've been fortunate to be elected twice to serve in the city council, and during each of those terms, I've either taken it lightly or for granted. I've used that time to fight for the things that are important for me. In all honesty, the things that we fight for are all life issues. There are garbage trickups. There are DPW workers. There are kids, there are fields that they play on, golf courses that we use on the weekends, the parks that we enjoy during the beautiful weather. Over the last couple, the last couple of years, there was a real large failure in investing in those, in that infrastructure. And what we've done, what I focused on in the last two years and two years prior was, what can we do to really get those things up and going again? What can we do to attract our neighbors to come to Glencoe, to shop here? Those are the things that we can really, really have an impact on. There's not any, you know, people think that we're certain stuff in the world's problems up here. We don't have a lot of the world's problems here. We're a very diverse community. I'm proud to be from that diverse community. I've had the opportunity to grow up with people who all walk the life. What we, what we do up here is we impact people's daily lives. How their day goes a lot of times depends on something stupid that the city can do or, or the fact that it's not done stupidly. It's making you know. So I've had the opportunity to serve under a great mayor the last two years. She has done so many wonderful things. She is the epitome of volunteerism, and she's instilled some in me as well, although I like to think I had some to begin with. But I would like to thank everyone up here for taking the time to do this. Thank all of you for coming to watch this. And I would appreciate anyone's consideration on November 7th. Thank you.
Judy, thank you for the monitoring. And Regina, thank you for being the president of the League. And thank you to the League for this opportunity to speak to everyone here. I'm very fortunate to have my entire family live here in Glencoe. My brother Kelly and his wife and their children are here. My brother Logan and his wife, Donna are also here. And Camille and I chose to live here because of the diversity of this city and the way that the city is run. After having graduated at Delphi University, I started my career in Liberty Insurance. I have the capability of knowing the insurance risk management, assessing losses and dangers of buyers in modern age, and work closely with nice, unknown insurance with the municipalities and the school districts. Also was on the school board here in Glencoe at this facility for six years. It was very instrumental in bringing the long-term superintendent, Riana, here to lead our school, to keep consistency as far as that leadership is concerned. Worked hard with budgets during that time, and I had the opportunity to have a great lesson and a teacher, Mayor Pam Panzenbeck, on this year's budget for government. We're happy that it is a 0%. I would like to return as your city councilman. We have had the opportunity to listen to everyone here, and I know as a servant of you, I will continue to learn, will continue to listen, and continue to be transparent. And if you like what's going on in our majority under the city council, Mayor Pam Panzenbeck, you return, all of us, plus two more, to lead this nation, lead this city to greater things. Thank you very much.
I would like to thank the lead-upwomen voters and giving us the opportunity for all to speak our piece here and say everything we need to say. There's a TV show that I like to watch on Netflix called The Way It Should Be. Spoiler alert, so if you don't want to hear about the first episode, cover your ears. In the first episode, they bring in a new medical director to the hospital. And what he does is brings every head of the department into just a lobby like this, hundreds of people there. And he asks all the heads of the departments, how can I help? No one answers. He asks again, how can I help? No one answers. So a little discouraged, puts his head down, and he goes, everyone in the cardiac surgical department, please raise your hands. They raise their hands. And what he does next, unprecedented, he fires more. And they think it's a joke. He goes, no, really, you're fired. You can get out. So they leave. One statement, he tells all the doctors out there, anyone in the department that places billing above care, no matter how much money you make the hospital, will be terminated. So basically what he was saying is that they lost their way from what they originally set out to do as doctors and help patients. So he goes again, how can I help? And gets a couple of doctors, tell them what, you know, how they can help in certain ways. He goes, sometimes you feel the system is too big to change. We are the system. We need to change. I work for you so you can work for your patients, he says. My agenda and everyone else's agenda up here is to work for each and every one of you, not put our parties first. You should be the only ones we need to listen to and to help. I'm not a politician. I'm not Danielle F. Zeydola. I'm definitely not a doctor. I'm John Sorrow. How can I help?
As I said earlier this evening, the reason why I initially ran for office is to provide transparency, accountability, and equal treatment and access to city hall for everyone. I've had the privilege to serve as a city council member for three terms now. I take this responsibility to serve the public very seriously. When issues come before me, I do thorough research, do diligence, and ask questions. Some people think it's too many questions sometimes, but I ask a lot of questions, all in order to make informed and fact-based decisions. Through methodical evaluation, I always try to do what I believe is the best for the most people. My commitment to the residents of Glencoe has been recognized by several organizations that have endorsed my candidacy, including labor unions such as the Long Island Federation of Labor and Glencoe's own Police Benevolent Association. I've also been endorsed by several community and social justice organizations such as Elmer's Legacy, Victory Fund, and the Italian American Pack. Also, Tom Tanapoli, New York State's comptroller, has consistently supported my candidacy. Tonight, we discuss various topics, including budgeting practices, infrastructure, and quality of life for residents. If you have any questions that have not yet been answered tonight, please feel free to reach out through my website at reelectmartian silverman.com. I can better represent you and your needs when I hear directly from you. I'm asking for your support on November 7th to allow me to continue building upon good governance practices that make Glencoe a more equitable, just, and fair city for all. Thank you again to the lead-upwomen voters, to all my fellow participants up here, and to everyone here in the audience and viewing at home or later on the website, and everyone who submitted questions. Good night. God bless the city of Glencoe and all of our first responders. Thank you very much.
So running for city council is my love letter to Glencoe. I knew soon after moving here that I'd already looked up and I had it here. You all, the community, welcome me and my family with open arms, and I'll make a clap. Running, you know, being on the city council, being on this side of it now, I see what a sacrifice it is to serve the public. I commend everyone of you up here for doing it, for how long you've been doing it. And I'm learning as I get older that there's true joy in serving others. That's where my joy comes from. So I want to get back to this community, a mother, I'm a professional, I'm a neighbor, I'm a volunteer, I'm a friend. It's important for me to stay true to my beliefs while respecting and listening to the beliefs of others and working to find common ground. If elected, I promise to listen, advocate, and work tirelessly for our shared vision of vibrant, prosperous, and inclusive city. Your trust in me will not be misplaced. I'm dedicated to making Glencoe the best it can be. So I humbly ask your support, your vote, and the opportunity to be the voice, your voice, on the city council. Thank you all for coming tonight and thanks for my, to my college friend, me, being in a pretty nice city. And thanks again to the lead-upwomen voters for hosting this forum. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
I'm so proud to be here and have my kids be third generation walking through schools. My father walked home on Good Island. My grandfather was one of the developers over there. And my parents still live here in Glencoe. You know, I couldn't be more proud of that, being in such a diverse community, learning so much from different religions, different races, and understanding different people's opinions. You know, certainly, I think with my marketing background and finance, I can really help with a lot of the small business support. Again, reducing, further reducing bureaucratic hurdles, helping with some grants and loans, organizing events, doing more community outreach, certainly social media. I mean, everybody out there now is on TikTok or Snapchat and everybody's outside of Instagram and Facebook. Enhancing public safety, and thank you to our first responders. Our local police department is amazing, yeah, helping them to improve their training, increasing prevalence, surveillance cameras, street lighting to deter crime. Basically, it helps make our community better and safer to want small businesses to come here. And then lastly, certainly, our children. Our children are a heart of Glencoe. There are so many wonderful programs. And our current administration, I'm so proud to be part of Team Panzenbeck. And Mayor Pam and Mini Mayor Donna have done an amazing job. And, uh, Mayor Pam and Mini Mayor Donna have done an amazing job. You look, you just drive around and you look around at everything, Morgan's Park, John Apple Stadium, the sketchy, the squishy field. It, it's beautiful and it's wonderful, and hopefully we can continue to move that forward to provide amazing opportunities for our families and our youth here. And as George Turner Shaw once said, beware of false knowledge, it's more dangerous than ignorance. And I, I think really wiped that means losing correct decisions and false information. And, and I really encourage transparency, and again, with the marketing background and with my finance background, I really hope to help that, and I hope that you consider me for city council on my seat, thank you very much.
I was thrilled to get elected to city council in 2021. I get to support and advocate for my community, family that I love. I truly believe my four years as deputy mayor and now six years as village clerk and treasurer in Plandale bring the much-needed expertise to city council. There is much to be proud of, especially serving with Mayor Pam. Pam had the experience to hit the ground running. She loves Glencoe, and it shows, and it's great to be part of that positive momentum. I want to continue to improve Glencoe fiscal health, attracting businesses and visitors, and ensure that all residents enjoy an improved quality of life. In closing, I may not have been a born in Glencoe, but I'm never leaving. I hope that I've earned your vote. Vote Row B for the best for Glencoe. Thank you.
Thank all of you. This was a very complex forum, and may I say, you all did a really good job, so congratulations. I have continued to recruit human to serve our audience and practice my occasional shows. And the League appreciates your willingness to answer questions some voters thoughtfully, candidly, and concisely. So we salute your commitment to serving with your fellow, with your fellow Glencoeis in any role that you have to stand up to, that takes a very, that is very much courage to stand up for. So thank you all of you. We want to thank Glencoe High School for this space, and we want to thank the Glencoe Police, particularly our old chief whip, for great advice. And then finally, I want to thank you, the audience, everyone here, because your being here shows your engagement in democracy. And that is how we make democracy healthy, that's how we make your city council even better, and that's how we would show our patriotism. So thank you very much, and remember to vote, the story of the vote.